All right, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of May 12th. Our first item is a very pleasurable item. I think we've all seen these wonderful ladies before us. Four times a year, all throughout the seasons, whether it be rain, snow, shine, hot, whatever the case may be. They're up there, they're on Main Street, the four locations, they're putting down flowers, they're watering the flowers at the four intersections of 109, 16, then near Sacred Heart Church, Uptown, and then near the post office. And I just think that you do a great job. We truly appreciate it. No accolades, you're just nice and quiet, you just do what you have to do. And I think it makes the town look really, really beautiful.
Thank you.
And I know you've already started for the spring. I spoke to Scott Chrisifouli today, and he said that he's always available, whatever help you need, just give him a call. And we really appreciate the great work that you do. Before we get the bill, I'd like to turn it over to the chairman, the chairpersons, Gail Akhuri-Raikat and Candier Caddi. And how about Gail? Say a few words on basically, how many, maybe probably introduce everybody, talk about what the mission is, the goal, and some of the things that you probably have planned for the coming months.
Well, I'm feeling new to this, so it's, I've only been doing it for about four years. And Grace LaValle was doing the town plantings for probably nineteen years.
About that, yes, yeah.
And then Candier and I co-chair now, so things that I don't do, she does, so we work really well together.
Can you recognize all the ladies here? And maybe some of the ladies who aren't here?
I don't have my list with me, but there's Maria O'Reagan, Elaine McNana, Peg Nolton, Judy Thomas, Carol Burke, and Guru. And we have, what, sixty people in the Garden Club? We have sixty members.
Sixty people, wow.
Sixty members, it has grown.
Yes.
Yeah, it really has.
And we've got some newcomer, you know, some new, younger people too, because a lot of the old timers, you know, they're good, but they're starting to get, they're starting to get, they're starting to get tired, you know, and they've done, they've done so much work.
Watch out for a bunch of others, chairman.
They've done so much work that, you know, now they're ready to kind of step down and enjoy some of the benefits and, you know, give it to, you know, the younger ones in the hopes that we take it over for twenty years. So this year, we actually took on a couple more sites. We don't have the Sacred Heart anymore because of the island situation.
Okay, yeah.
So we do the 109, which Maria heads up, and the 140, which Judy heads up with her team. And we each have kind of a team, a group of people. And we have the town hall, obviously you know that. And we have a little, a couple buckets on Main Street this year, because we lost the big island there, so we're doing like just about, you know, a few. And that may grow in the future. We're also gonna take on Calzone Park this year, too.
Oh, nice.
Because I think, I remember from when I was young that that was always one of the big stopping places in one of the...
Yes.
You know?
Memorial Day, Veterans' Day.
Exactly, and they did, you know, it was always like geraniums there, and it was just an old town park, and I think it's been let go for too long. So, being a veteran myself, I kind of feel that we need to take that over and do something with it. And we also have the senior center that we're doing this year, too.
Oh, great, wow.
So, a couple more places. And the parks, Mike Brishani's helped us out a lot with funding and things, and moving some of the pots around that we need done. So this year, we're looking for a little bit more color. Last year was kind of our first time, and we kind of got a little, not too well on it, but...
It's a learning experience.
It was a learning experience. So this year, we're gonna do, it's going to be mostly hot pinks, yellows, and some coleus, and million bells. What else?
And a lot of hard work.
Marigolds.
Grass is in the center.
Yes, yes, racina, I think.
We specialize in flowers, so we know everything you're talking about.
I only know it because I read the tags.
And I think Candier, you're in charge of the planting, I guess? Are you the chairperson?
Well, we both do it, so.
Okay.
It's a group effort.
All right. We'll have a citation, but I want to get the bill before I present the citation. Bill?
There's no doubt that the effort that you ladies put forth certainly works to beautify the town. We talk about civic involvement, we talk about volunteerism, and this is as representative a group that takes that on, as Dino said, without accolades, without much fanfare. You just keep doing what you're doing. And I want to say at least, and I'm glad that Dino brought this forward, this is certainly his idea to have you here, and it's time. Hopefully, if businesses are out there that would like to help out, it's only helping them. If ever there was a group that was worthy of funding and support and help, it's your group. And so I appreciate personally what you do for our community, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So with that, I'd like to read a citation. "The Greenleaf Garden Club, in recognition of your dedication of commitment to enhancing the beauty of our town through your planting of flowers. On behalf of the people of Milford, the selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope of good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this day by myself, Dino de Rothlemaze, Brian Murray, and William Buckley." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Gail, Candier, if you come up, this gentleman will take a picture of all the ladies, okay? Why don't you have a seat, and he'll take a picture, okay?
And I forgot to mention, Dino, thank you for your service to the country as a veteran.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Like I said, your father was a good father.
It was a long time ago, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. If you need anything, you can call us up, call Ricky up, Scott Chrisifouli, and we thank you for everything, and you'll make our town look really, really nice all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
All right. Gail, you did okay. Candier, you did all right. Okay, bye-bye.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh would like to say a few words. Bill, have a seat. How are you?
My name is Bill Kavanaugh, and I'm a lifelong resident of Milford. And I have a few things that I would just like to say, bring to our attention. One of the things that caught my attention, and I can't understand why, is that the, why isn't the Plains Park open? It's been closed, and I think this is the time of year that the people would like to use the Plains Park, and that it's been closed for weeks, and I don't understand why.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Sure, Bill, yeah.
Basically, the reason it's closed is they are replanting, and it has to lay fallow for a while, so it's that time for those fields.
Okay.
Where unfortunately, it has to be that way, so.
Okay.
There is a valid reason, we hate to see it, but that's the reason.
I know. Some people have been asking me, and I say, the place looks so beautiful, and people like to walk the area, and I just think it's like, this is the time of year that people want to use it.
I know, but that's the reason.
Bill, on that, that's, I just want, a good point. Rick, can I, I don't know, probably not, but can you ask the park commissioners if, like, people walking, if they walked on the areas, that would be okay, right?
Okay.
I can check on that, sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I can see the fields, but maybe the walking areas could be open.
The walking areas, I think people love to walk the walking areas, you know?
Sure.
People can stay off the seated areas or whatever, you know?
Yeah. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
The other, one of the things I was thinking about, I was wondering if the selectmen might have like a question and answer time via the town administrator, that people might ask questions for this selectman, people that can't come to the selectmen's meetings, like elderly and handicapped people, that they could propose some question, legitimate questions to the administrator to be voiced at the meetings, not for a long time, but, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes of questions and answers from people from the town who can't attend the meetings. And maybe you people can take the questions from the administrator and maybe answer them over the media, like, you know, meetings right now.
Yeah.
You might take that into...
Sure. There could be something, well, we'll have to, you know, work that out, but either, you know, talking on the phone with the residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, you know, getting the answers. But I think that could, it's something that we could work on.
Well...
But I think it's something to be more accessible to those people who can't come to the meeting.
Well, yeah, a lot of people can't come here.
Right, yeah.
And I can, but...
Yeah.
And I'm making my words known.
Bill, any comments on that?
No, my thought is that, you know, and this isn't defensive, I just want to make sure that at least while you ask the question, we list the opportunities that we do use. And so beyond where the selectmen are seen publicly, people would naturally approach us. If people aren't out and about always, and especially you mentioned the handicap, that's a good example, where they may not catch us at the market or at a ball field or somewhere. We also have our telephone numbers available on the website, as an example, so folks can call us. I know frequently I get calls. Sometimes it takes me a few days to get back to people, but we do do it that way. And then is obviously the board meetings that you're aware of, as an example.
Exactly.
But I appreciate and take in the spirit of your comment, that maybe there are other things we haven't thought of.
Well, that's what I'm thinking myself.
Sure.
Yeah. Bill, along with that, maybe we can, you know, put something on the website.
Yeah.
A little blurb for that situation, and then we can pursue that.
Exactly. All right. The other thing, this is the last thing I want to...
Sure, no, take your time.
...talk about, is I'm a member of the Friends of the Apachal's Trail, and I am a retired US Army Corps of Engineers, civil engineering design project leader. And I was asked to participate in some remediation on the trail, certain erosion problems, and that was back in 2012. And so they asked me if I could prepare a plan of remediation of certain areas, of which I did with, along with Reno Deluzio and Teresa Mazzarelli. We prepared a comprehensive report, and this is the report that is submitted to the trail president at this time.
Okay. Do you have another one, Bill? Brian, he's not here tonight, he couldn't make it.
I have one.
All right, yep.
And what, the problem is, like, nobody seems to want to remediate these problems, and this is an example of the erosion problems that exist in the area. And on the fall cleanup, this gentleman, Jemcoff Rock and myself, cleaned this area up by hand.
Wow.
And it just seems like it never gets remediated, and we think, we think that it's just not getting enough attention to, it's just ongoing.
Okay.
These are areas, like at West Hill Dam, that have a similar situation, and this is what they have done.
Okay.
With the rock replacement.
Replacement.
And it has alleviated that problem. So I am frustrated along with the other members of the, I'm not on the committee, but I was an advisor, and I would like some action done.
Can we keep these for...
You can keep those, yes.
Temporarily?
Yes, oh, yes.
Yeah.
This is...
No, that is quite interesting, and, well, we have good people, I think, that, this is quite a report, we certainly can't read it tonight, but we'll...
Reno and myself and Teresa Mazzarelli prepared the report, and so I'm sure it's gonna get some attention now.
Bill, but we certainly want to thank you for all the items that you brought up tonight.
Okay.
As far as this, as far as this one, we'll certainly send it to the right people, and maybe at a future meeting, we'll call you in and maybe talk about some of the mitigation that we can do.
Most definitely. I have gotten, I know when Scott has been asked to do things, he has been very willing to do his...
Sure, sure.
He's done a wonderful job. But it just seems like some of these things that have gotten very, people have left the Friends because...
Lack of attention, not that he's...
Lack of attention. It's just frustrating for a lot of people.
Well, thank you for bringing it forward.
It's a great cause, a great...
And thank you for your volunteer service.
It's a wonderful trail, you know, and I love it.
And the only weak spot is Reno, but we'll figure that out. But we'll certainly, we'll talk about this, we'll review it with the right people, we'll have it at an upcoming agenda item, and we'll call you back in.
I know I'm gonna get a lot of flack on this myself, but I'm not on the committee, so I can take it.
Okay.
And you just want to improve things.
Sure.
That's all.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Selectman Murray will not be at the meeting tonight, he has a previous commitment. Okay, anyone else on the invitation to speak? If not, signing of the warrant?
Motion to approve that?
Motion by Bill, I second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous? On the minutes, Bill?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Minutes of April 28th. Move, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Okay, now we'll go to the public hearings and scheduled appointments. The first one is Mass Electric. Anybody here from Mass Electric?
Fortunately, Mr. Chairman, I do not see anyone from Mass Electric.
Okay, so we'll just table this till later if he comes in.
Thank you.
As everyone knows, the town is well audited every, every May-June, the auditors come in, they look at everything under the leadership of the town accountant. And tonight, we have Scanlon Associates, who are the auditors for the town, and also Mr. Daniel Haynes, who will be presenting a, the report on the financial matters, management letter and all that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've just engaged with partner this year, if you recall, like, wrote a memo, to get the exact date of it, where recommended that we actually stick with Scanlon, but recommended a partner change, and this is the first year that we're experiencing that. I think you did a great job. Introduce, this is William Buckley.
Good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Hi, Mr. Hayes.
And Chairman Dino.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Again, it's part of the new buzzword, not a new set of eyes, so I'm your new set of eyes. Hopefully, I brought a fresh perspective to the audit this year. I didn't have any preconceived notions of the town of Milford. However, I did grow up in Upton in the late 60s, and back in that time, it's probably the same, there wasn't anything in Upton. So you had to come to Milford to do all your shopping and anything you needed to do to the booming metropolis, so.
Thanks for the books that you dropped off tonight, we have a copy of that.
So I've prepared a short PowerPoint presentation. It's much more entertaining than listen to me ramble on about the financial numbers. I had a bit of a cold, so I'm gonna grab my water.
Okay, take your time. So was the Hayes, how long you been in the business?
I've been in the business for almost thirty years.
Oh.
Started right out of college in 1985, and pretty much have been doing municipal auditing and some nonprofit work, a little bit of tax work, but our focus has been municipal auditing. It's a pretty good niche.
Yeah.
It's kind of a specialized area, and that's the way the profession is going.
Yeah, we look forward to this every year, the board members, because, you know, it's very important. About fifteen, eighteen years ago, the management letter recommendations, there were several areas that had to be addressed, and I think the board has done a good job to address most of those areas. There are a few outstanding areas. And the town really works hard to be in good fiscal shape. We have many people working towards that end, and so working with the auditors in the past has also helped that. So we look forward to what you have to say tonight.
I've also, you have the hard copy of this presentation.
We do.
In your files, whilst we're waiting for this to power up.
I know. There we go, I think we're okay.
And I have not seen this presentation, so I'll be following along with you guys as well.
Sure.
I think this will advance our slide, maybe?
And the box is just above your head, so you...
So, what is the point of an audit? Really just focuses on the financial statements, the numbers. It offers only what we call a backhanded level of assurance regarding internal controls. I think the terminology you see in the auditor's opinion is reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So reasonable assurance, that's an interesting term. If you could quantify that, you'd be doing better than me. What else is an audit, though? It keeps the financial management team motivated to follow processes through the year. You don't want to end up in the management letter. That's one of the, one of the things we do, and we satisfy your federal single audit requirements. If you expend greater than half a million dollars in federal funds, you have to have what's called a single audit. We did prepare that for you, and I will tell you that the opinions are unmodified, we don't have any findings related to your spending of federal financial dollars. And you spent a little over three million dollars, about three million and fifty thousand dollars. Most of that is school grants. So internal control. What is internal control? What we found is it's a process, it's affected by people. And because it's affected by people, you need to remain vigilant in your internal controls, in the structure of your internal controls. The three distinct categories that are of your management's objectives are effectiveness and efficiency of operations, reliability of financial reporting, and I said that we're really focused on numbers, that's step two there, compliance with applicable laws and regulations, single audit requirements, procurement statutes, those would be laws and regulations. What are our intentions? To add value. You know, we talk about a management letter, and people think, well, you know, you have these findings, and they bring it out in a negative context. I like to look at the management letter as opportunities, opportunities to strengthen internal controls, gain efficiencies in operations. No, that's what we hope we do with an audit. We are obviously satisfying applicable standards related to the GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, and accountability to you, the governing body of the town. So I'm gonna start with the financial reporting, and we're gonna move in to a little bit of peer group comparisons, which you may find interesting. Financial reporting, the past, what we had in the past, we had these fund-type financial statements. They were very easy to prepare, they were near-term, so in other words, there were no capital assets recorded in those statements, we didn't have long-term debt recorded in those fund statements. And we've moved, you know, in the mid-2000s, to the GASB 34 financial reporting model, which has a major fund presentation as its focus. There's governmental and business-type activities presented. And there's full accrual statements. The full accrual statements, this is where you'll find your capital assets, the long-term debt, everything should be in there, your GASB 45, OPEB obligations, statement in net position, and a statement of activities, which measures your revenues, direct revenues against those expenditures that are incurred on a full accrual basis. So what's important? Well, it obviously depends on the user. I identified four major uses, the citizens, the public, to help them make decisions on elections, bonds, you know, how the government's operating, management and the governing body to assist them in making budgetary and financial management decisions, oversight agencies, this would be the Bureau of Accounts, calculate your free cash, you know, sometimes they actually go back and look at our audit report.
They do.
And kind of compare those numbers to see if they're close to what your balance sheet said. And the bondholders and creditors, Moody's uses the statements to generate a bond rating for the town. So, in your financial statements, and I think you have a, you know, I have some bound copies for you, but you have them there, it's 56 pages long, includes an auditor's opinion, management discussion and analysis, the MDNA, the basic statements themselves, notes and supplementary information. Hopefully, the notes and the supplementary information help you gain a better understanding of what's in those basic financials. So what's new? These are new only and exciting only to auditors. The auditor's opinion on pages three and four, they've included paragraph headings. They talk about things like what are management's responsibilities, you know, who's responsible for fraud? I think this was great. I don't always agree with what the GASB comes out with, or the standing setting authority, but this is great. It adds some, it used to be just a hodgepodge in paragraphs, and you didn't know what you were really saying, you had to read the whole document, you know, this breaks it off in the paragraphs, it's much more reader-friendly. Unmodified replaces unqualified. I can't tell you the number of times I've met with boards, school committees, boards of selectmen, and said it's an unqualified opinion or a qualified opinion. And they would confuse qualified with quality, qualified meaning, what does that mean? It's a qualified opinion. So they changed that wording. Now it's unmodified. You do have an unmodified opinion, in other words, we call it a clean opinion on your financial statements. Your statements are prepared in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. And net position replaces net assets, and it's now a statement of net position. Pretty sure that the, you know, regulations and the GASB, they do this, you know, just to check whether we can update our reports easily. Good thing there's a search and replace. The financial summary. Unassigned fund balance, it's relatively new term, GASB 54 came out with different restrictions related to fund balance. Your unassigned fund balance in the general fund, sixteen point two million, or about nineteen and a half percent of your budgetary expenditures. Let me tell you, that is quite impressive. I don't audit many towns, if any, that have that unassigned position.
Dan, if I could, just so the boards are aware, that includes stabilization.
It does. Under GASB 54, stabilization fund arrangements are required to be presented as unassigned fund balance. That's up about eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars over the prior year. You do a great job of managing your budget, and that's where these reserves have been generated from, is your maintenance of the budget. I don't know of any towns that are generating new revenue sources.
It just doesn't happen, like I said.
It doesn't happen overnight, either.
Our board to a small degree, but the finance committee, the financial department has the financial analyst, Tom Meeting, makes all the decisions.
It's a group effort. This isn't the work of one individual. So these are your major expenditures. Obviously, education is your largest expense, and it's typical of every town we audit. So I've got it in this form, and then for the people who like the pie charts, you can see the bigger piece that's, that education does take of the dollars that are spent. Revenue. Property taxes, your largest source of revenue, it's also your, it's really your largest asset. Your ability, it's an intangible asset. Your ability to tax your residents is your largest asset. Brought in over fifty-four million dollars. You receive a significant amount of federal and state aid, however. Twenty-eight million, I think nineteen and a half of that is Chapter 70 funds. So when I talk about the school expending forty million dollars, you get a significant piece of that back from the state in exchange for maintaining your, you know, net school spending requirements. requirements.
Our residents, just one comment, our residents are also paying a fair amount of state and federal taxes.
Yes, they are, that's an excellent point, thank you. I was going to use that in my next presentation.
Thanks, sir.
There's what the pie chart looks like when you're talking about revenues. You've got your property taxes and federal and state aid, two big sources there. Sources of free cash. If you want to look at one state, out of the 56 pages that are in that report, page 17 is the budget versus actual comparison. It's, we're Moody's, they look at your reserves, they look at your demographics, probably demographics first, then reserves, and then they look at your budgetary revenues and expenditures, just to see how you're balancing your budget, how you're maintaining your budget. And again, you're fiscally conservative, your total positive variance, almost $1.8 million on a budgetary basis in 2013.
Now, Mr. Haynes, as far as that means, I don't know what that means, 1.7, I mean, compared to what would like, an average be in?
Well, that's on an $80 million budget, so it's a percentage, and percentages are always deceiving, it's not a huge number. I mean, if you had a million dollar, million, $1.8 million surplus on a $15 million budget, you know, then you have to question how was that budget established? But on $80 million, having 1.2 come back in positive expenditure variances, you know, I just call that conservative budgeting and good management of the budget.
And that would reflect in what people turn back?
Correct. Those are your appropriations and the turn back.
So, for example, if department heads aren't spending to every dollar, they're returning those dollars back. I know in some municipalities, people get the feeling that they've got to spend to budget, so they have to, or they might not be given that money in the following year.
Oh, that's, that is the general consensus out there. So, you know, that's, your departments are maintaining their budgets and they're fiscally responsible. I mean, that's...
As well as the second component is really taking in a little more revenue in some of the areas like local receipts.
Like excise.
Yeah, again, when we do the tax recap, it's estimates.
And some of that is conservative budget.
Yep.
And those budgets are very tight, I think they're well put together also.
As they are in most communities. Your debt position, I've excluded the geriatric authority from those numbers, but it's about 25 million in 2013, 27 million in 2012. I added up all the education-related debt and it's about 55% of the total. And that's about normal. I mean, that's, you know, that's not unusual of what we see for debt, maintaining good educational buildings and facilities for your students and your, you know, is a key component. And maintaining good infrastructure throughout the town is also important. So, here we go, we're off to the peer comparative data, I hope you find this a little bit interesting. If you could pull out this page, which I think is page 18 of the slide, because I'm going to kind of refer back to that, it's kind of my sample group, I have Milford on top. Your budget, your budget includes encumbrances, I tried to be consistent amongst each town when I was doing these comparisons, so 83 maybe look a little high, but that it does include the prior-year encumbrances. And then there's the populations and budgets for the towns that I'm comparing you to, I'm only labeling A, B, C, and D, these are actual towns and they're towns we audit, but in case I say anything negative, I don't want to, I want to make sure that I don't have that. And you may ask, well, why do we have town D with a $56 million budget and only 15,000 population? All of these towns have the same bond rating as the town of Milford. So, as we go further, you'll see bond ratings are more dependent on demographics and what's your commercial base, that type of thing, than they are your numbers, small town versus large town. You're all AA2 communities in the market. General fund debt service payments, Milford, 3.6, you know, we've got, if you, you know, keep that sheet on page 18 so you can see what we're comparing, you're lower than most of the communities presented here, except for town D, which is a smaller town. And your total debt, 22 million. You can see 67 for the larger town with a larger population and 43, 42, 48. I can tell you the towns B and D have new schools that they've constructed. But look at your per capita debt, under $1,000. That again is impressive. You don't see that very often. You can see that the towns with the new schools, 2,000, 369, still over $3,000 in per capita As I mentioned, your general fund education expenses, you're right in there with the towns, except for town C, and I don't audit this town, it is one of our towns, but I have to take a serious look or have somebody look at that because I'm not sure that even meets net school spending at 39% with a $30 million education. And that town is actually a similar size. So, I'd question the, you know, where that number was derived from. But you can see, you know, we're all in the, you know, plus 50% range for education expenditures. Total property taxes receivable. Milford's taxes are a little higher, you have a little over a million dollars in tax title, tax liens receivable. And you have some older taxes, which we've addressed as one of the management letter points. So, you know, that's a good thing to keep on top of. Your collection rate, what I did is I just took your collections less refunds for the current year, divided it into the commitment for that year, and you're at 97%. It's a great collection rate, you can see where everybody else fell. Town D, a smaller town, a very affluent town, they're at 98.7. Again, you know, if you compare Milford to the other towns, you're just a little higher receivable base there. Here's where Milford really shines. Again, let's see, this is stabilization balances and excess levy capacity, two somewhat-related functions, you know, excess levy capacity, a lot of towns will use their free cash and generate money from taxation, put it in their stabilization fund. Stabilization balances, 11.6 million, and that does not include your stabilization fund balance that you have in your sewer fund. So, that's about another $4 million, 4.8 maybe?
Right around there. That does not include insurance.
That does not include your insurance trust, which we will talk about a little bit in the management letter. You can see where the other towns fall, 2.2, 1.6, 2.1, or 11.6. With an excess levy capacity of a million three, million four, and you've done that without debt exclusions. That's unheard of. The other towns that I have listed there all have debt exclusions all over a million dollars.
Debt exclusions or overrides?
Debt exclusions.
Debt exclusion, okay.
But if we added a debt exclusion of, you know, the average is probably 1.2 for the other towns or a little higher, you'd have almost $3 million in excess levy capacity. Town B has...
Town C.
Yeah, they have, they have debt exclusions on all of their debt. And fortunately, they've had a growth in their commercial base and they have not been taxing to their levy for the last two years. I can tell you this has happened in a three-year period. They've gone from 1.6 to 3.2 to 5.3 in three years.
That's tremendous.
It is, that is tremendous. But still, 2.2 in stabilization compared to your 11.6. So, that was some of the peer comparisons. So, we're going to move into, oh, well, let me throw it back, if there are any questions, financial numbers, anything that sparked your interest or anything you want to talk about?
No, any questions that came to mind, you actually answer them immediately, so as I was thinking of, you were answering them.
And thank you, that was some great insight, I'm going to remember that tax issue there. So, the Milford management letter.
This is, we received this in the pack over the weekend.
Yes, you did.
This is information we just got tonight.
No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. They're all other items. So, you may say, "Well, what's your requirements?" If you don't have material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, I could communicate to you orally all of the findings. We never do that, not in a municipality. Because what's important, I'll tell you what's important, whatever's going to show up in the newspaper in a negative light towards your town tomorrow, that's what's material. So, we try to put in whatever we find that we think you should know about, whether it's a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So, we have some other items. We're going to go through most of those, we're going to go through them briefly, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. What's the key? Maintaining cost-effective level of internal controls. Can't stress that enough, there has to be a cost benefit. I could include or incorporate internal controls that would greatly increase your budget. Is it worth it? That's the cost benefit. And I think you've done a great job of that. I think your internal controls are, you know, managed on a cost-effective basis. So, what do we have? Reconciliation of bank accounts. This does not show up as a material weakness or a significant deficiency, and you might say, "Well, maybe it should." There were very immaterial variances, but as I mentioned way back in one of the first two slides, internal control is a process affected by people. So, we need to remain vigilant. So, as soon as some of the, as a breakdown in the process, we need to correct it. So, I've identified some of the real nitty-gritty, the detail items that kind of make up, you know, what's happened with this variance over the past year. They're not big dollars, but we need to get the process and get it right, we're talking about cash, it's a liquid asset. Payroll withholdings. So, we withhold funds, and I'm going to talk, this is mainly about health insurance, we withhold health insurance from employees either a month or sometimes before the summer from teachers, two months in advance, which creates a liability account. The town acts as an agent of those funds, we withhold the funds, we hold them in an agent account, and we pay them to the insurance company when they're due. I noticed the balance was higher than what I would have anticipated it should be. That's positive, I'd rather have it, have too much in withholding rather than too little in the withholding. But we need a process, again, to reconcile those withholdings, so what's being withheld from the employee to what's being paid in. Some of those differences there may be retiree payments, we want to make sure that we're allocating the bill, if you have employees that are on a different percentage basis for their payments, we want to make sure the bill's being allocated properly so that that agency count is being relieved. Self-insurance trust funds. Right now, we have those reported as an internal service fund. Those are allowed by statute. An internal service fund is a proprietary fund that records any activity that provides goods or services to other departments, funds, or agencies of the primary government. One of the main items that we see is self-insured health insurance plans, it's usually an internal service fund, so we're billing different departments for that, and then we're retaining the risk, paying the premium, not premiums, we're paying the costs that are incurred when employees go to the doctors. You've given up that risk. You don't, the risk is not retained with the town because we're paying on a premium basis now rather than a self-insured basis. So, we have about a million and a half dollars in what's called a health insurance internal service fund, which really needs to be rolled out and either, you know, maybe put in your GASB 45 OPEB trust or back into stabilization. Again, very positive additional money that the town has at their disposal.
Dan, if I can interrupt quick, I think it's important to note that in that balance, 30% of that is actually due to employees at the time as they contributed that amount. So, out of the 1.5, roughly, say, 1.2 is, as you said, could go to OPEB liability, could drop into free cash, we could appropriate it in more or less any manner that we wish to, but it's important to note that only 70% of that is town obligation.
And the rest you would need to grant a premium holiday, which the employees would benefit and the town would benefit in those percentages. Thank you, thanks for pointing that out. So, you also have a liability claims trust or internal service, two and a half million, and a municipal buildings and property insurance fund of three and a half million. You know, it's just, I'm not the GAAP police, but it seems like it's more money than what you have for risk. And if you are, if you have retained that much risk in self-insuring your buildings, then perhaps the town should look to some reinsurance offerings, which are very, you know, inexpensive, you know, where you would pay the first, you know, catastrophic event $100,000 and then reinsurance kicks in any time after that. So, you've got about seven and a half million dollars here in some internal service funds, which, you know, I'm saying that, you know, you should maybe look at those, review the current methodology and determine, you may look at that and say, you know, "That's exactly what we need, we've retained that much risk." I'm really bringing it to your attention. Payroll reporting period, this is where you use the auditor, I always tell people, use the auditor, get something, you know, gain some efficiencies and say, "Well, it was his fault, I'm happy to take the blame." Currently, you pay payroll on a weekly basis. It's a repetitive process, there's a lot of paperwork involved, there's time involved in that. Most of our communities, I believe I checked, there's only one other community we audit that has weekly payroll. So, you know, the state does, has allowed for quite a while, bi-weekly payroll period. There's some administrative costs to get it started. You have to have acceptance of your unions of that procedure. But I think you'd gain some efficiencies in a process that's very repetitive by doing that, and hopefully save some money.
And I think we've tried that in the past.
We are, yeah, and we're going to still continue to, with it being in the management letter now, maybe we have a little different position to attack it, but yes, definitely.
As general law allows for that, the question is, to what extent does that have to be bargained?
Correct.
Hey, you would have to get agreement from your bargaining.
You know, we've worked very closely with the unions in the past on maintaining costs on health insurance and all that, the unions have been raises and all that, so I think on something like this, hopefully, we can continue to negotiate so that we can have a unanimous and then go every two weeks.
I think the town concerns or the way it's addressed here, how it's, could free up time, it'd be more of a powerful spin on it, I think that maybe we might be more successful bringing it to the table again.
Sure.
I like your enthusiasm.
Yeah.
We got 90% of the people on board, so just one more attempt.
Nothing's perfect, but we have to keep trying to make things better. I think if everybody has the right agenda and the right attitude, we can, we've done that many times, so just...
And it's information, you know, you need to get the information out there, this does not create a tax problem for the employee. Have the same withholdings, just withheld over bi-weekly period rather than a weekly period.
Ball comes out in the wash, yes.
Let me ask this question, is there anything that prevents us from doing it with the employees that agree? The units that agree and departments that agree?
To my understanding, no, we currently have bi-weekly for the schoolteachers as well as a weekly, so, yeah, we're talking to some people and maybe Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, we could move forward with, say, this particular union still is reluctant to agree, we still could move forward with the ones that are on board, yes. Is that true?
Yes, you could, it would be great to get full cooperation.
Yeah, it would.
Oh, absolutely, no, no, but I want to, I don't want to have the 10% hold back to 90%. And that's where we are today.
Yeah, if it's that small of a percentage.
It is, then it still makes sense to do, leverage and take advantage of, and work out those issues on an individual basis with those units.
Further, I think it's a lead-by-exemple situation, they see there's really no downside to it, maybe we get them on board.
Right, exactly, and that's the other thing they'll hear from family members and friends is the ability to budget and manage, because sometimes it's just simply the change.
It is, yeah.
I worked for the Commonwealth, I remember whenever it came up, 18, 20 years ago, everybody was on uproar and all that, but actually, it's worked out well. And I think most people now would say, "No, every two weeks is fine," they wouldn't want to go back to it every week.
Revolving funds, revolving funds, you know, from our, not only our detailed testing of revolving accounts, but from a higher level. And I noticed that you have, the school has 16 revolving accounts with a combined ending fund balance of $910,000. A significant portion of that is in the community.
Community use, correct, around $450,000 at the end of 2013.
Which may be perfectly fine, I, my recommendation is you review the fee structure that you have, I'm not sure the town needs to be generating a profit from these activities, and that the fee should be designed to recover the costs that are incurred, and maybe even if you wanted to build on a small indirect cost, but, you know, so I'm saying, you review these 16 revolving accounts and, you know, determine what the, what the fee structure is.
And again, for some of these bigger ones, this is a buildup over a number of years, maybe even decades for that matter. So, as Dan said in his original presentation, this is his glance at this town, his first time doing it, and... and this is his observation. So I think with it being exposed here, I'll go with the school department superintendent, business manager will talk about it and see where we're at.
And are the, just out of curiosity, Zach, is the school department, specifically the business manager and superintendent, aware of this management finding?
Yes, they are. We discussed it last week, and we plan on discussing it further in more detail.
Very good.
Number six, finance director.
Yeah.
Is the town at a point now where you need to seriously consider having a finance director on board rather than using the town accountant type of government for your finances? It's, it's one of those, you get to a certain point where a finance director does make sense because they can certainly change or improve the control environment at the top. And that's really the tone at the top. From everything, from trying to generate additional dollars through the tax collection process, looking at tax liens, debt, structure of debt, whether debt exclusions make sense for a town of this size and future borrowings. Those are the types of analysis that a finance director can do that a town accountant doesn't generally have the time because they are involved in the real day-to-day operations of the numbers. It's something to consider. I, I, I'm not telling you that, you know, you need to do this. There are towns of this size that do not have that. Town D in our example, the last town, the smaller town, does have a finance director. It's worked out quite well.
Actually, it makes perfect sense to me. It's a good recommendation for us to look at.
Yeah, we've talked about that in the past, not at a real depth level, but we've talked about that. In order to do that, Dan, are we talking about much more personnel or not really?
I would think probably one person. I mean, I would think that if somebody like Zach was promoted to the finance director position.
So one person underneath Zach.
You would need to hire a town accountant to maintain, you know, similar to the duties that he performs now. There are situations where the finance director is also the town accountant.
Correct.
That's more entitled than it is functionality of the position. But certainly something, you know, you might want to consider.
Sure.
Talk to other towns that have done that, that have taken that leap. I mean, if you adopt, you know, strict GFOA budgeting guidelines, I mean, that's something that just takes a lot of time. And if you're going to get to that level, that's something that you seriously consider having a.
And one thing this, this board had just done a few months ago was expand the role of the assistant town accountant, where I've been giving them a lot more responsibility with the higher recognition. So I'm not sure it would be necessary to hire someone in addition if the board decides to go down that road.
So it could be cost neutral, but it's something that you'd always look back on to see if it's, if you would need more help. It's not something that would be fixed, you know, next year you could look at it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you certainly have to address that in the, you know, if you're doing a study or looking at it. And again, asking other communities, you know, what they've had to do.
That's something you could get us, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. I think, sorry, I think it somewhat goes hand in hand with some of the comments and reconciliation with the town accountant. You have segregation of duties and all that, where I think the expansion into a finance director would give a little more exposure into them areas and keep controls tight.
Yes, it does add in an additional level of, you know, looking at internal controls. And I'm not saying it should be an internal auditor type of position, but a finance director looking at the control structure, you know, from the top and making sure that those mid-level and lower-level controls are in place. And, you know, you have good act, control activities and monitoring, you know, that's something that those expanded duties could take into consideration.
You know, we're coming close to ninety, about ninety million dollar budget now, so it's a pretty, pretty good-sized company, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I think we've always looked at controls in the finance area to be very positive for the town. So I think any, every, any time that we've had a chance to do something to strengthen that aspect, we've done so. I think if we started now or, you know, within a few months, whatever, to look at that, I think this is something that probably, we could probably have, working with the FinCom and all that, within, you know, a couple of years, maybe sooner. But I think it's, when I saw that, I was, I'm glad you made that recommendation formally.
You know, I only had one prior year item that I've repeated, and that was on the old delinquent real estate taxes. There are some taxes that go back, I think, the identification of the owner. There's some owner unknown properties in town. I know those are rare, try to find, we need to dedicate resources to do that. But I think it's important to bring those onto the tax rolls. You think about generating a bill to an unknown owner, you can't collect it. It certainly probably, you know, depending on the amount, plays into your collection rate, that ninety-seven point oh-nine percent. If you don't have any unknown owners, you bring it back into the rolls, you're collecting more in current taxes.
There are a lot of businesses that they had three million dollars in receivables would be off looking at that pretty quickly.
Yes, that's a good point.
Yeah, this is something that's been on the, on these reports for the past, probably past ten years at least. And I think we've made an attempt to do something about it.
Yeah, and those are being addressed, and we noted that in the eye.
You know, once and for all, we should try to, you know, nip this in the bud and try to, you know, complete it over the next year, year and a half. Because how many processes are we looking at? Do we know?
I don't have that number in, in here. You know, it's not substantial. I mean, obviously, it's not twenty percent of your tax base.
Right.
But again, every year that goes by.
Sure.
Those are taxes that you're not collecting that are, that are bringing in dollars.
It compounds on itself over time, right?
Correct. The tax liens, and I think the tax liens are, tax liens, collecting a tax lien converts directly to free cash.
So Zach, it's something that, you know, continue working with the administrator, the town council, see if we can really close that so that it won't be there next year or at least a year after.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just think, I'm not sure, we, did you have more to go through? Because I didn't see number one. I didn't see management finding number one presented, so I just want to make sure you may have unintentionally skipped that.
That was the bank recs? Yeah, the reconciliation.
The reconciliation, okay. Actually, I had some questions related to that. And then there are more for, for Zach. Maybe you skimmed through it. This one draws a lot of attention for me because it says that we can do a better job. And again, I look at your report as opportunities for improvement, nothing more. And this isn't a punitive response, but I just want to make sure that, that I understand it because at this point, the management response frankly could use some more meat, in my opinion. Maybe we could look to get that within the next week or so as a detailed response to each of the findings.
Yes.
And I would look for a few components.
Okay.
Who the owner is.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the action plan? And when we intend to close on it? And I'd also look, and while, you know, the, the one that'd be a little more difficult to do that with is the receivables, the tax title. So what I would look for from the accountant's office is a goal to bring that down and significantly by some percentage over a period of time where you think we have the resources and can apply the effort. So if it's fifty percent. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Set an objective to say fifty percent reduction, I'm throwing out numbers.
Yeah.
It has to be based on, you know, what you think, but to be closer to the benchmark communities, you know, a fifty percent reduction over the next year.
Yeah.
Or a year and a half, or two years. And I don't say that to you, Zach, to say, look, this is on you to solve. Frankly, it's on management to solve. It's on this board to solve because as Dino said, we've been looking at the same finding for ten years.
Yes.
So, and I've been here for nine of those, so I'm not, and I'm the more junior member.
Yeah, no, I completely understand.
It's on us.
Yeah.
We're just asking for your help, and what I'd like to see is some objectives.
Yeah, definitely.
Just want to set expectation.
Right.
But bank, bank accounts and reconciliation, I'm a little confused by it, so I want to better understand. I wonder if you could give me some more detail as it relates to reconciliation of bank accounts. And it says that this, this cashbook reconciliation goes back as far as June of two thousand thirteen.
Right, and we, keep in mind, we were auditing June of two thousand thirteen.
Well, what they, what they do also is subsequent testing into the new year.
Okay. So I want to understand, is that a problem that continues to today or ended as of June of?
Two thousand thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Yeah, no, it certainly continued. We went through a transitional period, as you're well aware, from elected to a appointed position.
Yeah, but that was just.
The elected treasurer, nobody's seen it coming, it just happened right at crunch time at year end. So when you're doing a June reconciliation, you're really doing that in July, sometimes even August, when you're at year end at that level. And I think the treasurer's office was under a tremendous amount of, not difficulty, but pressure this year with a lot of obstacles thrown at it, and.
But this goes back, this goes back to treasurers, just to be clear.
Not necessarily. I mean, when, he's identifying that June was not reconciled, but again, it's not being reconciled till July or August, but.
Okay, let me ask this question. Do we have a May reconciliation of two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
So that was reconciled. June wasn't reconciled.
It was reconciled, just could have been done better.
Okay. All right. And maybe you could give, provide a little more detail about the importance of this finding.
From my perspective.
From your perspective, from an auditor's perspective.
Oh, absolutely. And I said it in the recommendation, the lack of formal bank reconciliation procedures increases the risk of errors of fraud occurring and going undetected. Cash is your most liquid asset. Not that this is all cash, it's, you know, bank statements and reconciling those bank statements to the ledger. But that is the nuts and bolts. That's what, you know, cash coming in, going out, it's a, it's a process, and that process has to be reconciled. The reconciliation between the treasurer and the accountant is critical. That, in the reconciliation of receivables, those two items.
Okay.
Are the two critical areas where things can go wrong.
And see, it's funny, this is where I linked your recommendation for director.
Exactly. And I, and I think that could make a real difference, not only here, not only in the reconciliations, but in the, the collection of those receivables, aiding in that, helping in that process.
Right, I'm sorry, those were the two places that I thought. Because what it does is it sets up an environment where you have accountability to a single person who's finance skilled, finance educated, understands interfaces with you, but also has, you know, to your point in your recommendation, oversight over some aspects of the collector's position and treasurer's position. So as, as we move forward, you know, I would look to Zach, I guess, to, to, to implement this reconciliation process. But I'd also look to the treasurer and collector to make sure that they're enabling that and they're clear about the expectations of that, so, and that we not let multiple months go by without that happening.
Absolutely. I've been working with Irene for a few weeks now, and she's jumped, as soon as she came on, jumped right into cash, as she should, recognized we're behind in that area, jumped right in. I think she brought some new reconciliation tools to the table, been working with me on everything. So I think it's been working out great, and I see that being a tremendous partnership going forward.
Okay, and by Irene, you're talking about the new town treasurer?
Correct, yes.
Okay, the newly appointed one?
The newly appointed town treasurer, correct.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
All right, I feel better. And if you're on it, Zach.
Yes, sir.
And if you have that more detailed management response with some breakdowns, some deliverables, objectives, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Dan, this is very helpful.
Thank you.
I just think it expounds on what we're trying to do here, and we're very fortunate to have Zach.
Yes, you are.
He was a great find, and, and I think it's important, you know, moving forward, all these types of things. Anytime, I know we've called upon the auditor in the past to assist whenever something came up to make departments, to make the financial process a lot cleaner, tighter, more streamlined, and, you know, more advantageous to the taxpayer. So we'll definitely continue those things.
Yeah, and that exchange of ideas is critical, and it helps us in the audit process.
You bet.
Sure.
It's a, it's a two-way street there.
Thank you for the service.
Thank you.
So you'll be with us for a while, right?
I, I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a three-year deal.
Thank you so much. See you later, Mr. Scanlon.
You will.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I don't see the first appointment, Mass Electric and Verizon, so they're probably not coming tonight. Our next appointment is with the Marshals. Hi, Richard. How are you? Good, nice to see you. I think everyone knows Richard Goldberg. This is an application for antique secondhand dealer's license.
My father wished, my father wished to be with us. He wasn't feeling well.
Okay.
We understand. Hope he's feeling better.
Great family. Okay, one fifty-four West Street, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to five PM. Like I said, secondhand license. The town officials' information sheet is in order. You know about the tremendous amount of taxes, forty-nine, forty-six, right? I think you paid that today, okay?
I believe it's already been taken care of.
All right, good, yeah. I heard, I had Ricky call you today and put the arm on you for that money. This is an application, new license, secondhand antique dealer. This will be Monday through Saturday, ten to five. Everything seems to be in order. You want to add anything to that?
I'll answer, glad to answer any questions. I was here during, when the chief brought up this new statute.
Yes.
Point that I brought up that I think would probably make elected officials feel better is that I don't do any cash. I only pay by check. It tends to, it basically stops anyone who's, has nefarious issues going on. So it's really, for most, ninety-nine percent of my transactions are people who are purchasing a new ring who say to me, what am I going to do with the old one? I'll take it in trade and reduce the price of the, the transaction. That's it.
Well, I think you and your family have always done things well in Milford, very professionally.
Thank you.
You serve us the Milford people well in the area, and I think that, I wish we had more businesses like the businesses you and your father have run in Milford.
Thank you. We're beginning our sixtieth year promotions. So my grandmother started Marshals in nineteen fifty-four.
Bill, any questions?
I don't. I would agree with your, the comments that you made. I have no reservation at all about your request and.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve.
Over seconded, any discussion, all in favor, opposed? You know, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Okay, next, the town engineer, Vani Reese. Vaughn, how are you?
Fine, thank you, hi.
Vani's been coming to all our meetings. She's going to be a regular part because she's so proficient and does a great job for the town. This is a report on the Louisa Lake Dam. This is something that, as we all know, whether bridges or dams, they're inspected. We received a report over the past couple of years, and then this one was a recent report. And so Vani's going to go through it, and I talked to her today and said, let's present all the information on the table, short-term recommendations, long-term recommendations. We talked about maybe procuring two thousand dollars, twenty-one, twenty-five hundred dollars to hire a, an engineer to start the inspection on the dam. And then Vani will also have some recommendations for us. So, because I think, you know, when people see this, especially people who live close by, they become very nervous. And I, and I think I, we would be too. So we want to assure people that we're on it, we're doing the right things here. And going forward, we'll have a, you know, this dam rectified within a year, year and a half. So with that, Vaughn, you're on.
So the, the town has been very proactive, and this is, this letter from the Office of Dam Safety is not a surprise to anybody. The letter does make it sound like it's very, it's very grim and dire. And I did meet with the dam inspector from the Office of Dam Safety out at the dam. And he explained to me that this type of letter is standard. It sounds, it's very strongly worded, but they're, frankly, they're not all that concerned because they know Milford has been proactive about their dams. So I, I tried to summarize in my memo the several-page letter from the Office of Dam Safety. Basically, they cited the dam as a sign. Basically, they cited the dam as a significant hazard potential because of several deficiencies, including overgrowth of brush, lack of regular operation of the sluice gate, evidence of erosion in several locations, and some cracks and voids in both the dam and the riprap spillway after the dam. So there are, are, like you said, Dino, there are short-term and long-term solutions. We do have to hire an engineer who's certified to do dam inspections, to come and do an inspection before June thirtieth, we need to file that report with the Office of Dam Safety. And then every six months thereafter, do a follow-up inspection. So the first, the first step would be to do that initial assessment of the dam. The clearing of the vegetation on the dam has been something that the Highway Department has already been working on, and they've-
So Scotty's been on that, right?
They've, they've already completed a, a good deal of that, I think it made it into the letter just because it was kind of a leftover from the previous report that was done two years ago by GZA for the town, contracted by the town and for the town. So Scott and the Highway Department have been working very diligently to get that vegetation cleared around both the dam and the two dikes that go into Louisa Lake. And then the phase-two dam inspection and investigation would be a much more detailed investigation and evaluation of the structural integrity of the dam. It would include permitting and the putting together of construction documents as well. So that's a little bit of a larger item that we probably need, need to talk to after we meet this first deadline. The gentleman from the Office of Dam Safety that I met with did tell me that the deadlines in the letter, in, for the, after that first phase, after that first inspection is done, are somewhat flexible, so for example, if the town needed to wait to go to town meeting in October to appropriate the money for the next phases of the program, that's a conversation that I could probably have with them and, and talk about adjusting those deadlines, but it is something that we need to look into, if we can, if we can fund it immediately, that would be great, and if not, then we'll have to look at other options. In terms of the long-term compliance actions, we do have to notify all the abutters to Louisa Lake and within a half a mile downstream, downstream of the dam, once we have a plan to do repairs on the dam. And then we need to move forward with construction of the repairs. The letter states the dam must be brought into compliance by November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Again, that is something that we can negotiate with them. I actually have already spoken to GZA, who is our stormwater consultant, and, and we are looking into potential for grants for that construction, so hopefully the town will be able to get some type of grant money to do that work.
Now Vaughn, that date of November fifteenth, November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, that's a complete finished off project of that dam, right?
Completely finished project.
Okay.
So the, the goal here, the long-term goal here is to do the repairs on the dam that will, that will stand for many, many years to come, and then we can check Louisa Lake off the list and, and look at one of the other dams in town.
Yeah. I just think we should be, you know, proactive, because this is, you know, it is important, people, people become nervous whenever they hear that, and a lot of times misinformation also makes it worse. So I, I spoke to the administrator today about the two thousand dollars, the twenty-five hundred, Rick, were, were we able to find out anything about?
I, I think we'll be able to handle that, yeah.
So I think, you know, the board could probably, you know, get going on that tonight, we could vote on that.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, I'd like authorization for me to, to proceed to put together a contract with GZA to do that inspection for us.
And I think that the, we should present, well, the administrator will work with the Finance Committee Chairman, of letting him know what's going on, all the information and the cost factors going forward. You know, we should be aggressive with this and prepare a, an article for town meeting that in October, if we have all the information, I think we, we should be able to. And I think as far as notifying the abutters, Vaughn, if we can, I'm not saying this week or next week, but if we can put together a little, a letter, and let the people on Diller Street, if we can, you know, send a letter to each home, at least advising them what's happening, what the information is, what the plan is, and then if they have any questions, they could, but I think that would be a, a good, you know, good effort on our part to, you know, keep people informed, okay?
We can do that, yep.
Bill?
Yeah, I just have one question. Rick, who's the, who's the actual person responsible for making sure this is followed up on and that we get it back to a, a point where it's not considered structurally deficient or in poor condition? Because what I hear is a lot of names, and I just want to make sure I understand who the point person is.
I'd be happy to be the point person, I think we have to re-inspect.
No, Scott, Scott and I will be working-
Yeah, I'm just looking for one name.
My recommendation would be then Vani to be the point person, she has the most familiarity with it. Obviously, we'll work with Scott, I would like to be kept in the loop also.
Okay.
Yeah, technically Scott is in charge of the dams in town. I don't think he would mind me being the point person for the paperwork part of it, though.
Yeah, and, and the reason why I ask is, is there's continuity that goes back to the prior town engineer, we're talking about the report that came out in September twentieth of two thousand twelve, and again, March eighteenth of this year, without what I would say is significant headway made on the, um, the areas such as the sluice gate, regular, regular checking of the sluice gate, voids and cracks, grouting, riprap. And so I, I haven't seen anything come by this office, so I'm not, that's why, since then, I haven't seen anything, and, and I appreciate the fact that you have the town engineer, that you want to appoint as the, the point person for that, because then I'd look for those reports to come out of that office and her to spearhead this activity with the state as well.
Sure, I'm fine with that.
No, that was my only comment, I was just looking for a name, a person.
Sure. So Vaughn, I think this is good that we're bringing it forward, we're addressing it short-term, long-term, and it will keep the FinCom Chairman updated with all the information, all the financial aspects, we'll notify the abutters on Diller Street, Cronuship Park Road of what's happening, and, and then we'll look forward to hearing, receiving the report from the engineer who'll be expecting, inspecting the dam. So with that, I think we could make a motion that will proceed to hire an engineer to inspect the dam at a, what, cost of two thousand? We'll just have to find some-
Are you sure that's sufficient? Are you comfortable that's sufficient?
Yes, yeah, I asked them to give me a quote.
All right, so let's move and second it.
Second, yeah.
And that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vaughn, thank you, thank you.
She has the next one, too.
I'm next.
Yeah, you have the next one, too. Okay, this is on Milford Pond, regarding some expanded environmental notification, water quality, and notice of intent, and we do have the monies, this would be not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, and Vaughn, you could give the particulars, okay?
As you know, we're doing this project with Army Corps of Engineers on Milford Pond, and GZA has been working with us on this one as well. We have obligations to complete permits that if the Army Corps of Engineers was doing this project without our involvement, they would not have to do it because they're the Army Corps, but as a municipality, we have to, so they do not consider the costs to prepare those permits eligible for our in-kind contribution, which was one point eight million dollars. So we appropriated money for the match for the project, but we did not have the money set aside for these permits. I don't think that it was clear at the time that we entered into the contract with the Army Corps of Engineers that, that that was going to be the case. Zach and I went back and looked through the records of what we have for Milford Pond, and there was a capital fund, and then there was some other money in the one point eight million dollars that we can free up, so the fifty-seven thousand dollars is available, and it was originally appropriated to be used for the Milford Pond project.
Good. I'd make a motion that, that we approve the use of those funds for this purpose.
And this will probably be the last expenditure before we go off a bit, right?
Yes, yes.
Any discussions, all in favor, opposed?
Thank you, Vani.
Thank you.
Oh Vaughn, just five more minutes of publicity here. Can you talk about Memorial School, since you're here?
Sure, I would be happy to get that out of the way. We received a complaint from the Police Department, issues with people parking on, on this, on the street in front of Memorial School. Those areas right in front of the school between, um, between the intersection of Emmon Street and Grant Street on Walnut Street are used by the parents for drop-off and pickup, and the intention was for those to be drop-off and pickup areas, but there's no signage there. So the request was made that we paint the curb yellow, so it's clearly a no parking zone, and we put up signs that say drop-off and pickup only, no parking zone, and the police chief concurs with this, and Scott is able to do the work within his budget.
Okay, motion?
Well, I don't know, it's, since it's within budget, I don't know that, but I do appreciate you bringing up correspondence between the chief and the, yourself and the highway to let us know that this is going to be going on and solving a problem that they have concern over, but it's within the budget, so there's no more vote or approval required, right?
Correct, yep.
Unless there's approval for signs?
I guess just the signage was the only area I had.
Right, yes.
Yeah, move and second.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, you're free to go home now.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vani, for everything. Okay, this, that concludes the scheduled appointments at this time, and I guess the Mass Electric will not be here, so we'll have to reschedule them, right?
I will do that, yes.
Okay. Town Administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The registered marijuana dispensary, I participated in another teleconference call along with the other representatives of the twenty towns and cities where provisional licenses to open a dispensary have been granted. I met with the executive director of the program, legal counsel, deputy director, and compliance manager. At this time, they inform me that expanded background checks are still taking place. After that is completed, the compliance manager will meet with town department heads to review and discuss inspection, inspection process requirements regarding compliance with the DPH regulations. I also spoke with Michael Dundas of Bay State Relief, who, and he and I will be setting up a meeting with, with him and his representatives, as well as relevant department heads to get a status report, to include a timetable from them regarding their construction schedule and a tentative date for the opening of the facility. Local aid estimates based on the house final budget are in, the estimates for chapter seventy-eight is a little over twenty million dollars, the estimate for unrestricted general government aid is two million seven hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. As we all know, these estimates are subject to change as the state budget process progresses. Happy to report the accessible fishing platform is now complete, I did attach a photo for the board, I do want to extend a special thanks to Harold and Marshall Rhodes for their generous donation to fund this project, which will be enjoyed by many. I have been informed by the Sewer Department that they have authorized its sewer consultants to test alternative methods of de-watering sludge from the town's wastewater treatment plant and design a sludge thickening facility. John Meinini, Director of Sewer Operations, has informed me they're doing some pilot testing of equipment to see what will be the best alternative, what other method, whatever method is used and equipment is installed, he informed me the sludge thickness will be covered and moved inside, and odor control will be implemented, it should be a significant improvement for the system. I know we've had some concerns from neighbors, so it's kind of an update for them. And then finally, I have written to Worcester County Sheriff Louis G. Evangelitis to inquire about using the community service program for projects in Milford. I spoke with Senior Custodian Carlos Benjamin and Parks Director Michael Brashani to discuss potential projects. We have identified two such projects, cleaning and spreading, cleaning and spreading mulch at the police station, and also cleaning town-owned parking lots. I then met with Lieutenant Stephen Hines on May ninth, he provided me with the rules and regulations of the program, as he is the supervisor of the program. We have scheduled the week of May twenty-seventh for hopefully three to four work- released prisoners to come to Milford under proper supervision, under proper guidelines, to perform this work. We do need to provide food for them and also the tools and equipment for them to use. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, any questions for-
No, no questions, thank you for the detail.
Yeah, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to old business, and we'll be talking about the finishing off the annual town meeting articles. Bill, could you make a motion that we reconsider Article seventeen?
Certainly, yeah, make a motion that we reconsider Article seventeen?
Okay, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to, you know, I think the, Vani, the town engineer, town planner, Reno Deluzio and Bob Buckley have worked hard on this, on the reservation restriction process, and, you know, a lot of work, and I think it's, it's good work and good things, and hopefully someday, the town may be able to use that. We've had, the Board of Health also was in favor of that, going, the town doing that. The Planning Board, FinCom, have not supported it, and that's fine, I, I think they, they raised some questions and some concerns, because I think on this particular issue, I think we're all trying to do the right thing here, I think we're trying to protect that land, so that no one touches that sensitive piece of property. I've had a lot of, I've had many, many town meeting members call me and write to me over the past couple of weeks, commending the board on what we've been trying to do, and at the same time saying they feel more comfortable with the, the two hundred acres being under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And I think after having listened to all those individuals and town meeting members and Bill's thoughts on the matter, I, I feel that, once again, I think it's, most times it's, when we're going in the right direction, I think it's good to be inclusive. We've received the comments from our town officials, and we want to thank them for their valuable work, but it's the other individuals who have to vote and have voiced their concerns to me, so I was in favor of the reservation restrictions with the trustees, because I thought if there were two ways, if there were an absolute way of doing it, that would probably be the best way, but having heard all the comments and the feelings, and you really can't dispute what a lot, many, many people are saying, that, you know, let the Conservation Commission handle it, protect it, nurture it, and then someday down the road of the town meeting or selectmen feel that something else should be done, that's their priority, so if there's a motion that the, this piece of property be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, I'll have town council draft that particular article, and it will be presented at the town meeting on Monday, and I will second that motion.
All right, yeah, I'd, my, my thoughts are generally that, you know, I think what we've heard and what we've seen from some boards and committees are a penalty of being fiercely loyal and Milford proud. I, just as you said, Dino, I think the benefit of this discussion is it got in front of everybody, the, the town residents, the various boards and committees, that this was an area that's sensitive and needs to be protected. I think there are vehicles that people have mentioned, water overlay districts that make it incrementally harder for anybody to do anything, and my concern is that for us to take this to town meeting, we'd almost have to give the impression that it were under threat. I know that any prior proposal by any past town meeting planner, town meeting, town planner, I should say, would have met with fierce opposition, and you had mentioned you personally being opposed to any-
Yeah.
-prior discussions about development there. I think this raises that awareness, and it requires two-thirds town meeting vote. Conservation Commission, I believe, is eminently qualified, and I think with the possibility of water overlay protection district and zoning, I think there are additional high hurdles that we could put on protecting that land, but all within our control. You know, I've had the opportunity to- You know, I've had the opportunity to look at and not disparage the trustees of reservation, but, you know, when I look at their tax, tax returns and see executive directors making $220,000 a year, executive vice presidents making $177,000 a year, and we talk about altruistic 501(c)(3), there are people making an awful lot of money doing that, and I don't, I don't want to talk too much about that portion of it, but I just, when I look at the board of directors as an example, and the vice president's claim to fame would have been that he helped put a development in a casino in California. I, I think Milford's qualified to do this, and I appreciate the fact that you've gone out and researched it, and I would make the motion to support that it go under the Conservation Commission restriction and that we delete any, any reference to trustees of reservation.
Yeah, move and seconded. Any more discussion? Yeah, and there's no question. Many years ago, and I proposed this at town meeting, and I looked at all my notes, you know, I asked the town meeting members, you know, we would protect it, we would make sure that there's no development and all that. So, I think that's consistent with that. I don't think I used it in perpetuity at that time, so I, but it's, the message has been clear, and once again, they wanted me to mention, each one of them, that they commend the board on what we're trying to do, and I think this is, you know, a good, a very good compromise going forward. And like I said, 20, 15 years from now, if other people, boards want to do something different, they certainly can. So, with that, nothing else, all in favor, opposed? Two in favor. Okay. So, have town council prepare the, the right article, okay, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Also, Bill, I had a discussion with the other idol, article that was maybe a little bit controversial, clarity and all that. I had a discussion with the chairman of the CIC. He's a good man. I talked to him about some alternatives, some suggestions going forward, and he was going to bring it back to his board, so he'll be making some sort of a discussion or presentation Wednesday night. But hopefully, we can, you know, over the next year, continue to work with that, and in as far as the differences, maybe clarify the difference or eliminate the differences or make the, the article even stronger going forward.
Okay, yeah, mine was just a process question, how things got submitted, okay?
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. This is over and above that. Okay, anything else in the articles? I think we've covered all the other articles. Yep.
And we still have a meeting if we want to support.
Okay.
Yes.
At this time, we'll go to the administrator for the, the IT director, and Rick, as Bill has said in the past, this has been a tremendous undertaking. I never thought would be at this position tonight, and with the recommendation of an IT individual. Chris Moore is also here, part of the committee, Zach. So, you know, great job, and we look forward to your recommendation. Rick?
Yes, thank you. As you know, the position was advertised in the Boston Globe and the Beacon on April 1st. We also posted on both the Beacon and town websites. We received 22 applicants. On Friday, May 2nd, and Monday, May 5th, a committee composed of Robert Tremblay, school superintendent, Chris Moore, FinCom member, Carlos Lazard, one of the members of our Technology Task Force Committee, and myself interviewed four candidates. We thought we had four very well-qualified and experienced candidates. However, one, we thought, stood out based on his education, his extensive experience as a director of technology in two school systems, as well as his technology skills. We believe that Alan Graham has the necessary qualifications and background to support the appointment. He has served as the director of technology and operations at the Ashland Public Schools. He's currently director of technology at the Framingham Public Schools. He has extensive experience in school technology, which included preparation of budgets, overseeing capital projects, designing and managing the implementation of infrastructure upgrades, and providing technology leadership, excuse me, for staff and students. He's worked with superintendents, school administrators, municipal employees, school committees, boards of selectmen. He has also, in looking at his resume, worked as a technology director in the private sector. He's a graduate of Worcester Polytech Institute with honors. He completed his degree in three years. Myself and the members of the committee respectfully recommend that Mr. Alan Graham be appointed to the director of technology position. I do want to thank the four people I just, three people I just mentioned. In addition, I want to thank Sue Edmonds and Police Chief Tom O'Laughlin for helping us also in, in this process and continuing to serve on that committee. If the board were to approve this recommendation, I would also request that Mr. Graham be placed at grade six, step five, with that starting salary. I would also request that he be allowed to begin working on June 1st, 2014. I did meet with the personnel board this past Saturday morning, and they have approved Mr. Graham starting at that grade and step. So, with that, I would welcome any questions, and then look for your recommendation.
No, but I do want to make a comment.
Sure.
So, my first review of this resume, my first impression, I should say, of this resume, not meeting the individual personally, having, taking on faith and trust the folks that work so hard to, to screen the applicants, that the, my first observation was this person is very uniquely qualified for this, this position. I'm glad to see a resume like this in the candidate pool. It's not a surprise to me that he made it to the final four, and that your recommendation is that this person go forward and be appointed. I continue to be concerned, and I'm going to say it, I continue to be concerned about the salary. I think it's low for the responsibilities. He's going from a school district to an entire municipality. And, you know, us folks in the private sector always like to benchmark private sector. And from a competitive standpoint, I, I realize it's not private sector, because there are pensions and there are other intangibles here, but let me say this, from a, from a taxpayer standpoint, they ought to be assured that people that are working in the private sector are making significantly more money than this, doing this type of role. So, I, I just don't want to make it a revolving door. So, I appreciate it's a good candidate, high skills, impressive resume, impressive education. And Chris, thank you for your participation in it in the back of the room there.
Thanks, Chris.
And that's all I have to say.
Motion?
I'll, I'll be happy to make a motion to appoint Alan F. Graham of Upton as our next director of technology.
Okay, motion, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Good, great job.
Board is in agreement with the, yeah, starting salary.
I'm sorry, and at the recommendation, starting salary that you had worked out with?
Yes, you were.
It's going to be June 2nd, right, Rick?
Actually, it will be June 4th, Sunday, but.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Bill, anything on the old business?
No more under old business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the new business, we did Memorial School. This is breaking AIDS right. Is there a motion?
You know, it didn't come in on the standard form, and, and I appreciate the amount of detail that's here. What I don't have, I have a assertion by the, by the logistics coordinator that they've contacted Chief O'Laughlin. But as would be typical for any, any obstruction, or walk, or ride through the town, normally we'd get a form, and normally we'd get the Tom O'Laughlin signing off on that. So.
Yeah, we, we, he has, I apologize.
Okay, so we do have it, I just don't have it in my package.
Yeah, this is one where the chief really does look at the route, and actually helps out if I remember in past years.
Yeah, he knows the touchy areas, and he knows where they need to be safe, where we need to, okay.
He oversees the route, and we have his approval.
You saying that is enough for me. I'd like to make a motion to, to approve this.
Move, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Next, PINS has an extension of hours for the common virtual license for May 23rd, June 6th. This is for after prom parties.
Yeah, motion?
Yeah. Move and seconded, unanimous. Milford Lions Club looking to banner over Main Street, 169, moved and seconded. That would be on May 13th to June 13th. That's unanimous. Veterans Annual Parade by John Pillar, this is for Monday, 26th, and permit to obstruct a public wave, which is a parade.
Yes, move.
Move. Motion, seconded, and that's unanimous. Bill, anything on the new business?
No more.
Okay. I had asked the administrator to send a letter to the owner of the property on East, 104 East Main Street. This is right at Cedar Street, the gas station, your Gibbs. The former Gibbs. I just think it's a case now where, you know, it's unsightly, there are cars parked all over the place, and hopefully, the, the individual will respond to the administrator in a couple of weeks.
I will follow up.
And if not, follow up. And I think, Rick, just to, you know, to provide more information, you know, next, next time, you know, CC, work with town planner, town council.
Okay.
Short, you know, we're looking for short-term improvements to that area to make it look viable. It's in the center of town, it's a major thoroughfare, long-term, long-term plans. Also, with cars and trucks parked there now, I think as far as, you know, the leaking of oils and all that stuff, the Conservation Commission may have a problem. And if there's any way that, that they're willing to sit down with us and negotiate a price to, to maybe obtain that land. So, I, I think of anything, something has to be done where they, they can, you know, put loam on it and seed it, make it look presentable, but any one of the other things would also be good as far as the town is concerned. Bill?
Yeah. Normally, when a business exists, there's a site plan, there's parking configuration, there's lane striped, and as a result of the leakage of fuel at that location and the subsequent remediation, all, all parking, all the business, the building has been left to sit idle, and people are parking willy-nilly, blocking sightlines. So, there's a lot of reasons why we would need to work cooperatively with that landowner. And I appreciate the chairman's, you know, thought. I, I think we ought to work the enforcement side if, if the efforts to work cooperatively with that owner aren't successful. Ownership is a little bit tricky. It's something we need to consult with Council Moody on, simply because we know its history. We know it's leaked, and we know they had a significant amount of leakage, so.
You know, I just don't trust oil companies. If they want to donate the land to the town, that'd be great. We could make a nice little park there or something, but.
Yeah, I think this is an independent.
Aside from that, right, maybe we can do something, but something has to be done.
I agree with you, and I'm glad you raised that point, Mr. Chairman. It does look awful.
Then we also have, Bill, the last drink that we received, this is where an individual was brought to court, and they asked them where his last drink was, and it could be, accurate or not, but we received these, and what we have been doing is sending a copy. We received these from the police chief, and we also send him a copy, and also to the business now. We have on one, the Turtle Tavern Cafe Sorento. On the other one, the Royal Buddha Turtle Tavern, PINS in the Alamo Zone. We'll be, we'll be sending a letter to those establishments. Bill, any other correspondence?
I don't.
Okay. That concludes the open part of the meeting. We do have a couple of items for executive session. Our collective bargaining and litigation, is there a motion for executive session?
Yeah, I'd motion to go into executive session or collective bargaining for the sewer department and town council, Moody litigation claim.
Motion by Bill, I second, roll call, vote.
Aye.
All in favor, I oppose. We will not be coming back into open session, and good night.